Hi Marilyn, it's Veronica.
How are you?
Good. Oh, great. I'm good, thanks. So, Friday the 22nd at 1:00. Okay, so that...okay, great. I'll see you then. Okay, you're welcome. Bye-bye.
I love working with seniors.
I usually Steve usually comes in and sets it up, so I didn't even pay attention. I don't do that anymore.
We were discussing that we're not moving to F.R.
I forget. I've got other things I think of.
Sort of.
I like the sound of that, though.
Oh, Mary, do you not need me to go to the one that Amanda and...
If Scott's going. See, Central Sierra Economic Development. If you can go.
When's that?
Thursday. It's Joe usually goes. Amanda's the alternate. Amanda can't go. Veronica can't go.
Right.
I have if nobody else goes. Because I have something I usually have every Thursday, but it's not like something that I'm responsible for.
It's in Sonora.
Can't have him do that metal training.
Yes, whoever. I've got the...
You do want to go, girl. I don't have a...I have no desire.
What's that?
I have no desire, no. One of the committees I want to...Central Sierra is...
I thought we quit it. We did quit it.
Yeah, it's not the...
Not the other one.
Yeah, I was like that.
I mean, if you're free, I'll do...I go to BioStair Thursday. You know, again, I won't. I'll go if you're not.
I'd open that free. I think I'm in my desktop.
Thursday's usually bad.
What time of day is it?
9:30 to 11:30.
Morning?
Yep.
I can't go in the morning.
Okay.
I can't go in the meeting room.
Okay, I'll go.
Yeah, Central Sierra Economic Development.
Talking back to you.
Hey, what's going on?
That's the 21st.
Yeah. No, it's the 20th. Thursday.
Thursday's the 21st.
Yeah. Yeah, no, 21st is Friday. No, you're right. I'm sorry.
I'm not writing the calendar.
22nd.
I think it's already kind of... It's just kind of fine on a little bit. They're gonna throw away.
That's right. So that's why I was thinking, oh, no, we're having a party. No, no, wait a minute. No, we're having a day after my birthday.
I've got the museum. Museum's finishing that morning.
All right. So, shows come out.
I don't think that would be the case.
I think we revoke it, but they now have an automatic rider journey to do it. They'd have to meet all the requirements. I don't think they can stop them from doing it just because they don't, you know, they do it under their current EVA.
It's a good thing. Where does it go?
Oh, okay. She's good? Good. Hey, that's okay. You just gotta get away from it, fish your business, enjoy yourself. Yeah, I would imagine so. Good?
But I still want to...
You can call me tomorrow. You can call me Thursday late afternoon, like after 4:00. Tomorrow, pretty much any time. And then Friday at 6:00. You got it?
A lot of people don't want to have this stuff. I mean, I know you were thinking about the distribution, but I think most people do it. So, you know, it's complicated.
I talked to a couple of the partners during the other part of the group. I talked to a couple of the group actually, and they liked my idea.
Yeah, what they're saying is, well, if you're gonna bring this up, you better bring it to me. To me, it's just, just bring it public and, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm responding to a public event.
I have a plan where they can go both sides.
Because he's gonna be someone...
It's another week to treat, so it'll probably be...
Yeah, no, true, but I know I've got something about that. It has taxes and has... It's a go-between, it's not like a... So, I can feel like a...
The biggest one, the...
Yeah.
...factory that has... So, there's some important...
I have some mine, but...
Many more sets of taxes on it. It's not much of a distribution, so it's not...
We can't tax it. So, it's...
Is it that...
Yeah. Well, that's it. We gotta get moving on it because December will let the kids get around. They suddenly seem to get all those things. Doctor Wu. I have to think it's similar to California. Yeah. Don't call, I wish it was like...
Yeah, I can't say it. Say quarter to 10:00.
It's quarter to 10:00 all the time. I keep looking at the... Wait a minute. Try and try!
I call the order that the regular city council meeting Tuesday, September 19th. If you all please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
We just adjourned from a closed session. We actually had a closed session after the last meeting. So, on September 5th, a conference with the labor negotiator, direction was given to staff. We also had a conference with real property negotiators, and again, direction was given to staff. And then we had another conference with real property negotiators, that direction was given to staff. And today, we had a conference with real property negotiators, and direction was given to a negotiator. And then we also had a conference with legal counsel, and direction was given to counsel. And now, we have an agenda for this evening. Does anybody want to make any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Approval of the agenda is moved by Councilperson Herman, seconded by Councilperson Matilde. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. And now we have our staff updates. It's an informational item only. No action will be taken. We have a consolidated staff report in our file. Has everybody had a chance to review that? And are there any questions or comments? None? Wow, that's a first. Okay. We will move on to council updates. Councilperson Matilde.
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Fallendorf.
Yes, one update. Last night, I attended LAFCO, and we reviewed the Hoover Commission recommendation for special districts and various districts with LAFCO. And it was encouraged that each respectable board, council, and board of supervisors bring it to the agenda just so we, everyone's aware of what those recommendations are at the legislative level. So, maybe the next meeting, we can bring that. And also, if there's any, anything that city staff would like to review and bring back to LAFCO to let the commission know, to make comment on it.
Okay. Councilperson Norman.
Tomorrow, I'm meeting with COG and the county about transit. And the decision is trying to be made whether it's going to continue with the county or it's going to go over to COG. So, I'll be part of that discussion tomorrow. And then, just another thing that I maybe I'll bring up now, just as a kind of little report, is we did have a big Christopher Reynolds of the Los Angeles Times... We can't hear you very well. Oh. Christopher Reynolds with the Los Angeles Times, and I think it's probably an online site. Anyway, we were able to have information about Angels Camp and about the coming Wild West Fest. And we weren't sure who put that into Facebook or got that into the Los Angeles Times, but it's really a good article. Talks about our history and the frog jump and all of that, and Mark Twain. And that was back in September 7th or something like that. So, I thought that was a really good thing.
And last Wednesday, I attended a ACBA mixer, and it was the opening and ribbon cutting for the new pizza oven, was it wood fire pizza oven and bar at Camp's Restaurant. And it was a wonderful venue. The pizzas were awesome, and it's nice to see our local businesses raising the bar a little bit. So, that was fun. Okay, now we move on to the public comment section. And this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on a matter that's not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment, public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our Destination Angels Camp presentation, and Debbie Ponti.
Good evening, council. That's Debbie Ponti with Destination Angels Camp, and I'm pleased tonight to introduce to you one of our featured businesses. This is a member of our advisory council. We have tonight with us Mark Wilson of Signal Service. Signal Service has been in Calaveras County for quite some time. Mark is going to talk a little bit about that. But we are pleased, as they've joined us as our newest member of our advisory council. They also have purchased real estate in downtown Angels Camp, and will be relocating their offices here within the next couple of weeks. So, I'd like to introduce Mark Wilson, who is the chief bottle washer of Signal Service.
Hi, I'm Mark Wilson, and I'm here representing Signal Service. You know, I really didn't talk very much with Debbie about the content of this presentation. I don't know what you were expecting, but I was just hoping to share kind of some background information on our business, since we're going to be neighbors. We celebrated, Signal Service celebrated 40 years in business last year. So, this is our 41st year in business. In fact, and I operate the business with my two brothers, Andy and Will Wilson. In fact, I brought along an image of our very first shareholders' meeting 40 years ago. This picture was taken just outside the shareholders' meeting. The two scrawny ones on the left are Andy and Will. I'm the guy on the right with the intelligent, intense look to me. But actually, in all fairness, to give credit where credit is due, my father, Wilbert Wilson Sr., started Signal Service in 1976. And in fact, at that time, the company was called Calaveras Signal Service. He started it as he was retiring to Murphy's. And his logo was this kind of funky, jumping frog. And in time, we adopted a more noble bullfrog logo. And we kept that logo for a long time, but as I'll share, you know, years went on, and we grew, and we did business further away into other counties. And we reached a point where that particular logo, we needed something that was a bit more generic. So sadly, we don't have the frog logo for our company anymore. Interestingly enough, I still get asked about that logo at trade association meetings. It was pretty popular. But anyway, so Dad started the business in 1976. He passed away in 1981, and just in the several years following that, long story short, my two brothers and I agreed to collaborate and continue operating the business. And so, we started out basically in the living room of that house, which my mother owned at the time, as in Murphy's. And that's where we worked for a number of years until we reached a point that actually, we moved to Angels Camp, and we rented a space from Vaughn Tribble in his professional center over there. This is probably 30 years ago. And we were Vaughn's tenants for a period of time, and we continued to grow. And when we outgrew that space, we bought a couple of buildings just up the highway from the park, just above the stamp mill there. And we were in those buildings for more than a few years until we outgrew them. And it was at that point that failing to find a next home in Angels Camp, we moved to Vallesito. And let's see here. See if I can do this. Some of you may remember Ray's RV and Napa Auto Parts in Vallesito. We bought that building from Ray Barbaum 15 years ago, and remodeled it into our business office. And so, we have been in Vallesito for the last 15 years incubating. And during that time, again, we've continued to grow. You know, when Dad passed away, he had 18 customers, and we're at a point now where we have nearly 4,000. We do business from Duolomi County up into El Dorado County and down into Sacramento. Today, our subscribers include most, not quite all, of the municipalities, regional hospitals, and school districts, all up and down the Highway 49 corridor. And so, having been in that building for 15 years, we've got nearly 20 employees now. We're kind of crammed in there. And as luck would have it, Larry Cornish called me spring of this year on behalf of Destination Angels Camp. Larry said he wanted to talk to me about Signal Service relocating Angels Camp. And so, I told him, well, your timing's really good, because we need to move on. So, he arranged a meeting with Debbie at Destination Angels Camp at the Cornerstone Building. And so, at that meeting, Debbie, being so well-informed and prepared, shared a map with me of all of the property available for sale in Angels Camp and a listing of all of the buildings. And I noticed the Cornerstone Building was on the list. And so, I thought, well, boy, this would be ideal. And long story short, we bought the building and we evicted Debbie. So, you know, there you have it. So, it's been, we actually closed on that in April. And it took a while to sort things out with the tenants, including Destination Angels Camp. And the couple of tenants that we needed to move have relocated, including Get Smart Group. Right. Just so you know, Manzanita Gallery will still be our tenant. They're still downstairs. And we plan to move into the building, not this coming weekend, but the following. And then we're back. So, I thought I'd mention a little bit about what we do before I surrender the pulpit here. We do traditional burglar alarm systems, commercial fire alarm systems. We do cloud-based access control. I don't see anybody nodding their heads like they actually know what that is, but anyway, we do it. And a lot of our work is for commercial buildings. I mentioned fire alarm systems. As a matter of fact, we are hosting a California Fire Code workshop, and we have invited all of the fire prevention officers, plus many facilities managers, all throughout the Motherlode. That will be, I believe, October 22nd. That's just part of sort of an industry service we do to try to help foster education. So, we also do commercial camera systems. So, burglar alarms, fire alarms, access control, CCTV, that's our core business. And I think I'll just sum it up, saying we're really happy to be returning to Angels Camp. It's, we were reluctant to leave when we couldn't find a next place 15 years ago. And I really appreciate Destination Angels Camp's efforts to reach out to us and help us come back. So, thanks, everyone. All right. Bye now.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mark, and welcome home. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine. They'll be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested person may request that the consent items be moved for, removed for discussion. Today, we have the approval of the minutes from the September 5th meeting, and also adopting, we're adopting Resolution 17-32. It's a resolution approving the temporary closure of Highway 49 for the Angels Camp Business Association's annual Christmas parade. Is there anybody that would like to move one of those, or remove one of those items for discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
I'll second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Fallendorf, seconded by Councilperson Herman to approve the consent agendas presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Okay, now we move on to our regular agenda. We have one item tonight, and that's the resolution amending the 2017-2018 budget to incorporate the list of projects funded by the SB 1, which is the Road Repair and Accountability Act. David Myers.
Yes. It's kind of funny. We just got the budget through the whole process, now we're going to amend it.
Yeah, hilarious.
Wasn't my choice. So, this year, the state passed the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. And what that basically does is it raises taxes on the gas and the diesel fuels. It increases the registration taxes, or fees, adds a registration tax on zero emission vehicles. And what that does, it creates a pool of money that they distribute to all the local agencies for road repairs. Now, the distribution is basically 50/50 between the state and the locals, and then that local share gets split 50/50 between the cities and the counties. And then, that goes out by formula, and it's apportioned by the formula. So, our share coming up this coming year is $22,855. Now, the second year, it jumps up to $68,560. They had a list of projects that they wanted to be funded the very first years, and so that's why our first year's apportionment is a little bit lower. But they created a whole list of procedures and guidelines that we need to do to get this money. And one of them is that we need to put this project, a project, in the budget. So, that's what this whole resolution does, is put a project in the budget. And we had to pick a project, and in my mind, Acorn Drive is still the highest priority project that we have in the city. So, since it wasn't a large amount of money, I know 97,000 isn't a large amount of money, but it is, but it's not in comparison for a road project. I think we ought to sign that money to Acorn Drive rehab in the future. So, my recommendation is, while I wrote up the resolution based on what this League of California City said that we should say, so my recommendation is to amend the budget and approve the resolution. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have. Have you been working with COG at all with this?
No.
Okay. The reason why I ask is, is any of this funding, can it help leverage to get some products on the shelf? Or either grant to do more than just Acorn Drive?
Well, right now, we have, usually what you're trying to find on leveraging money is to get the match going. We still have a bunch of toll credits going, and so we don't really need to apply that to matches on any of the federal aid funds that we're getting. So, this first couple of years, as long as the toll credits hang out, hold out, we really shouldn't be touching those. This is pure money we could put down on the ground.
When do we actually get these checks?
They're supposed to go out monthly, and we've created a separate account for, to keep track of those.
So, we've already received some checks?
No, the budgets...
Was it supposed to start until September?
The increases in tax will start in November, so they haven't yet got the money yet.
Okay. And when do we want to break ground?
Well, I'm shooting for 2018, which is two years. Because it really isn't much you can do with $22,000 in the first year.
Right. So, are we waiting, when are we, we're going to wait to do the Acorn?
Yes.
Until then?
Well, no, we're still doing the 2017 road improvement project around the intersection. But then, this money, do the rest of Acorn Drive, and if it works out, I'm going to do the cul-de-sacs, too. I know at least the one cul-de-sac we can do.
My concern, by waiting two years, are we making, these roads are deteriorating every day. And some of them, once they start, if I understand this right, once they start alligatoring, they get more and more expensive to fix.
Yes.
So, by waiting two years to get this money instead of using the other money that we have, are we jeopardizing the integrity of the roads and costing ourselves more money in the long run?
A little bit. I mean, it's not going to go exponentially apart right now. They're alligatored in some spots, especially down the flats around Acorn where the court turns off to the right. So, that area is probably the worst. As you get up to the top of the hill where the little unnamed court is, that could last for a few years longer.
It's mine, do we know how much we have in road funds that are ready for this type of project right now? Isn't it more than $100,000?
You mean as far as going towards the 2017 road...
Well, my thought is, if we're not going to get this money for two years, why wait two years before we do anything? All, we have road needs... All, we have, we have road needs now. I know where you get the bridge relinquishment money soon, I hope, and that's going to go toward roads. So let's start spending the money we have on this maintenance, and then two years from now, we'll have another project. We'll have, you know, there's all kinds of roads, so.
I'm spending all the dollars.
So is there, I see a disadvantage in using these dollars for this project, is the delay.
Yeah.
And I don't really see an advantage. Is there an advantage to using this, given there will be other similar projects down the line?
Well, there was some discussion, they haven't come to a resolution that, that I'm happy with. But there was some discussion about advancing a project, and then, as the monies come in, they could pay something in arrears.
Mm-hmm.
That never came to a good, good conclusion, in my mind. And I, I looked at maybe using this, this $22,000 to pay off a little bit on the 2017 project, and I thought that was just way too much of a risk. So I don't think that, I don't think that whole idea of doing a project and getting it reimbursed later on has been fully answered yet.
But I guess I'm thinking, so if we have the funds now, I'm rounding it to $100,000 to do this project, starting, we can start right now. Again, what would be the disadvantage in using our funds now, get the ball rolling early? And then, two years from now, because we're allowed to keep these funds and let them roll over every year, we don't have to, it's not a use them or lose them thing.
No, the, the only time you, you'd lose them is if you don't put them in the budget. So if I put them in the budget this year, and say that the project I'm going to do is in 2018, then I can use this amount that we put in the budget, and then next year's budget, and we can combine those two.
So what project, if we do that, what project can we start doing now? We have road funds now, we've been putting off our roads long enough, what can we start right now?
I'm not, well, I'm not aware of any other road funds, other than what we assigned to that 2017 road improvement project.
Julie?
Yes, Acorn.
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 I don't know if you remember from budget, but we pretty much exhausted our TOT roads funds. That's pretty much, maybe you have 40, 50,000, but we discussed leaving a little balance in that account. We moved the whole project that's going to take place this year, that Dave was referring to, the $100,000. We moved that all to the gas tax fund. So that's what's being utilized out of gas tax, and there'll be, I want to say approximately another 50,000 there. And then, the only other thing that's left is the relinquishment funds, which we still haven't gotten, as far as I know. And we scheduled the Raspberry staircase out of there, partially. So I think there was like up to $30,000 that might come out of the 271. So we've got about 240 coming in there. That's the balance that you would probably be looking at.
So we have the TOT roads, and we also have the gas funds, and both of them have about 50,000 in it?
That's a guess, but yes.
Can we use those funds for this project, so we can start now, instead of waiting two years?
For this particular project?
Yeah.
I, I don't see why we couldn't bank off of the relinquishment funds if you wanted to. I mean, we have cash flow.
Right.
It's just a matter of, you know, assigning it somewhere. I'm still a little concerned about you driving the, the TOT one down to nothing, because there's some regular work effort that goes against that money, and we're already in a bad situation from that perspective. So gas tax, no problem. If we have extra, I can come back with a report for extra there. But I think what Dave's trying to accomplish is, we have a deadline to put a project name on the funds that we had, and $22,000 was coming. We had already budgeted that $22,000 to go into a reserve, but we literally have to put a project name on it by October.
October 16.
October 16. So I think that's what he's trying to do tonight, is get the project name on those funds, so that we don't lose access to the SB 1 funds right now.
That's the advantage I was asking for earlier, why are we doing this? Okay, so, so that makes sense. So, all right.
We didn't name it or lose it.
So we, we name it, but I guess, we've, we've kicked these roads, we've kicked the can down the road so far, so long, it just frustrates me to have to wait till two more years to start our first project. And I think there's, there's got to be a way, so if we can, if we can front and reimburse, do something like that, let's get going.
Well, we're in the, we're in the 17, 18 year right now, right?
Right.
And then, the 18, 19 years.
We'll see it next summer.
Yeah, 18, 19. And so, this was, this project, I designated it as the 2018 road project. So we can float it around on those two half-years anywhere. The other thing you got to remember is that most of these are road projects, the rehab projects, which means asphalt has to be done when the temperature's good. We're getting towards the end of it. If we try to do a project right now, anything past November comes out, it'd be a pretty crummy paving project. So I'd be shooting for next summer anyway, even if you advance some funds to do another project.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
One more question. So if we put this name on it, Acorn, and you're able to finish it with what Scott's talking about, moving, using these other allocations, will it stop us from doing something else with that money in two years? Say, say there's some money left over, we have, you know, 40,000, do we have to keep it on Acorn? I just don't want to get it tied in to Acorn. Can it go to another project and be moved around, even though we put a name on it?
I think there, there can be some flexibility on that. And one of the things I did was name the project to be the Road Improvement Project.
Okay.
And that doesn't really specify any roads. And then, I turned around, set the locations, Acorn Drive. Next year in the budget, if I say Acorn Drive and Vallesito Road, or some other road, I'm just going to expand the scope of it.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not locked into just one, one, okay?
Yeah, I just want to explain why I chose Acorn Drive, more than anything.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions from the public? Comments? Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by counsel person Matildee, seconded by Vice Mayor Fallendorf, to approve the resolution amending the 2017, 2018 budget to incorporate a list of projects funded by the SB 1. That's Resolution 1733. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes four oh. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, David. Okay, let's go to calendar.
Okay, tomorrow, September 20th, at 2:00 PM, COG has a TAC meeting.
What time?
Two, 2:00 PM.
You got to change today, so we don't have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
1:00 turn off the meeting.
Who has a 1:00?
COG.
It's your turn.
Yeah, 1:00. Okay. 8:30, there is a CSEDD meeting.
On the 21st.
On the 21st. I'm sorry, that's 9:30. 8:30 is the Museum Commission meeting, and 10:30 is DACC's Executive Committee meeting. The 24th is the Mark Twain Badgers Boosters Fun Run, starting at 7:00 downtown. The 26th is UWPA at 5:30, and at 8:30, Calaveras Visitors Bureau Board Meeting. On September 30th, there's a food truck event at Utica Park, and then we meet back here on October 3rd for council.
Okay. I'll put that couple of those in my phone. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Take care, everybody.